I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Trenton Magid, David Rosacher, Michael Pate, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Christine Carnes, our Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Acting Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Acting Current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor from the City Law Department, and Lisa Agans, our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. They're over here. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has previously been said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder on the east wall of this room. And before we go any further, we have a couple changes to our agenda. Agenda item number sixteen has been withdrawn, and agenda item number twenty-five is on consent for layover. I will begin by reading the consent cases. Agenda item number three, case C-ten-nine-ten-seventy, C-twelve-nine-ten-seventy-one. Applicant, AVG CFM two-oh-four-Q LLC. It is on for approval. The request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Coventry Replat twelve, a minor plat located outside the city limits, along with rezoning from DR to DR and R four. This was laid over from our May first meeting. Location: Southwest of two-hundred-and-ten Street and George B. Lake Parkway. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda item number ten, case C-twelve-seven-two-ten. Applicant, Orchard Valley Inc. It is on for approval. Request: Final plat approval of Alois Acres, a subdivision outside the city limits with a waiver to Section fifty-three-nine-nine sidewalks and Section fifty-three-nine-eleven streetscape standards. Location: Southeast of sixty-sixth and Garvin Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twelve, case C-twelve-nine-ten-ninety-four. Applicant, Michael Wickham. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Blazek Acres Replat two, a cluster subdivision outside the city limits. Location: Southeast of one-hundred-and-twenty-sixth Street and Bennington Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Moving on, agenda item number fourteen, case C-ten-eight-sixteen, C-twelve-eight-eighteen. Applicant, Greg Stowers. It is on for approval. Request: Revised preliminary and final plat approval of West Hampton Park Lots seven through twelve, Outlot D, a minor plat inside the city limits with rezoning from DR and CC to DR and CC, and approval of the MCC overlay district. Portions of the property are located within the Flood Fringe and Floodway Overlay Districts. Location: Southeast of two-hundred-and-fourth Street and Belondo Parkway. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda item number fifteen, case C-ten-nine-nine-five. Applicant, Jim Rush. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R one to R four. Location: Fifty-sixty-six Harrison Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, it will be removed. Agenda item number fifteen. Okay. Agenda item number sixteen was withdrawn. We'll move on to agenda item number seventeen, case C-ten-nine-nine-seven. Applicant, American Tower. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the ACI-one area of civic importance overlay district. Location: Eighteen-oh-four Paul Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number eighteen, case C-ten-nine-nine-eight. Applicant, Gerald Mancuso, is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R eight to LC. Location: Seventy-nine-thirty Belondo Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number nineteen, case C-ten-nine-nine-nine. Applicant, James Burns. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the ACI-two area of civic importance overlay district. Location: Five-five-oh North Eighty-Eighth Plaza. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty, case C-ten-nine-nine-one-oh. Applicant, Vinceno Group, on for approval. Request: Rezoning from CBD to DS. Property is located within an ACI-one overlay district. Location: Nineteen-twenty Nicholas Street and ten-nineteen Florence Boulevard. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-one, case C-ten-four-sixty. Applicant, Anne Helm Centrus Federal Credit Union. It is on for approval. Request: Major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Falling Waters to amend the signage plan. Location: One-ninety-four Thirty-One Polk Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-three, case C-seven-nineteen-one-hundred. Applicant, GoPuff. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow warehousing and distribution limited in the CC district. Property is located within an ACI-one overlay district. Location: One-oh-one North Fortieth Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-four, case C-seven-nineteen-one-oh-one. Applicant, Dan Merrick. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow multiple family residential in the CC district. Location: Seventy-ten Haskell Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda item number twenty-five, case C-seven-nineteen-one-oh-two. Applicant, Ace Swimming LLC. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC district. Location: Northeast of two-hundred-and-ten Street and California Circle. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. The last case, number twenty-six, case C-seven-nineteen-one-oh-three. RB Rose LLC, RB Rose LLC, sorry. Approval, it is on for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow primary educational facilities in the CC district. Location: Twelve-thirty North Two-hundred-fifth Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Okay. Seeing none. Do we have a motion from the Board for those cases on for approval?
I motion for approval of agenda items number three, ten, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-six.
Just a second. Fifteen was removed from consent.
Oh, fifteen was removed, I'm sorry.
You're gonna remove that from the board?
Yeah, I removed fifteen.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, do we have a motion for those items on for layover?
Motion to layover, case number twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Rosacher?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, those cases that were on for consent have just been voted on, and they are done for the day. If you were here for one of those cases, those have been decided, and no further action will be taken today. The first two agenda items are for administration only, and there will be no opportunity for public hearing. Agenda item number one is case C-ten-nineteen-twenty-six, C-twelve-nineteen-twenty-seven. Applicant, Mark Wanake, Douglas County School District oh-oh-one. Request: Final plat approval of OPS Pine Creek Edition, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to R five. Location: Northwest of one-hundred-and-fifty-sixth and Eighteenth Streets. Eric, may we hear from the city?
Sure. So, the preliminary plat of OPS Pine Creek Edition was before the Planning Board on February sixth, and then approved by City Council on April ninth. To recap, this final plat would create three lots and three outlots for a new high school for the OPS school district. There's a few items that will still need to be finalized with the final subdivision agreement before it can proceed to City Council. The applicant will also need to submit a conditional use permit to the Planning Board prior to submittal of any building permit. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R five. Approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to City Council for final action.
Any questions or statements from the Board? Do we have a motion?
I move approval for the rezoning from AG Agricultural District to R five Urban Family Residential District, and approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to City Council for final action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number two, this is also administrative only, case C-ten-nineteen-six, C-twelve-nineteen-seven. Applicant, A-one Development. Request: Final plat approval of Lake Cunningham Villages, lots one through one-sixty-eight, outlots A through L, a cluster subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from DR to R five. Location: Southeast of Ninety-sixth and State Streets. Eric, may we hear from the city?
Sure. Preliminary plat of Lake Cunningham Village was before Planning Board in February, and then ultimately approved by City Council on April ninth. The original preliminary plat had two-hundred-and-fifty single-family lots. The final plat before you is for Phase One, which includes one-hundred-and-sixty-eight of those single-family lots. It's primarily the southern half of the entire development. The final plat is in compliance with the approved preliminary plat, and consistent with, and carries out the goals and objectives of the City of Omaha Master Plan. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from DR to R five. Approval of the final plat subject to the three items in the recommendation report being addressed prior to forwarding to City Council.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Move for approval of rezoning from DR to R five, and approval of the final plat subject to three conditions in the staff report prior to forwarding to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on, agenda item number four, case C-nineteen-nineteen-one-oh-seven. Applicant, City Planning on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request: Approval of the two-thousand-and-nineteen Annexation Package, Ranchview Estates S-I-D four-six-seven, Ranchview Estates Three S-I-D five-five-six, and adjacent areas, The Willows S-I-D four-nine-six, and adjacent areas, Stone Creek Plaza S-I-D four-four-three. Troy, are you presenting?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff for the Mayor's Office, and on behalf of Mayor Stottherd, I'm here to present this year's annexation package. As...
The same as every year, we have a number of goals and objectives when we evaluate various SIDs and adjacent areas. One of those is to eliminate islands within the city's corporate boundaries. Two, the package must be revenue positive for the city. And number three, it does not compromise public safety. While there are no SIDs or adjacent areas that eliminate islands as part of this annexation package, this annexation package is revenue positive, we'll just follow through that here in just a minute, and does not compromise public safety.
Let me begin by briefly explaining how we've arrived at kind of where we are today. First, we begin with a very systematic, very analytical evaluation. We begin with a list of all SIDs. Currently, there's about one-hundred-and-thirty-two SIDs within the Douglas County area. We then begin systematically eliminating those SIDs, first by whether or not they are either adjacent or adjacent plus one. We can only annex properties that are contiguous to the city's corporate limits. We then begin eliminating SIDs where an SID may not have sales, restaurant, and/or hotel tax. If there are at least two of the following: levy greater than sixty, net debt greater than three million, or a debt ratio greater than four percent. So, between those SIDs that are not adjacent or adjacent plus one, and those SIDs that do not meet this criteria, we eliminate those from the annexation package. This year, that reduced the list down to about thirty-six SIDs. We then route those for kind of review and consideration by each of the departments, outside consultants, our law department, to better understand sort of the fiscal health and the conditions of each of these SIDs. Based on that information, we narrowed the list down to twelve SIDs for what we call a full-service evaluation. That full-service evaluation goes out to each of the departments, and we get feedback on what it will cost the city to provide essential city services over the next ten years. As a result of that full-service evaluation, we've identified four areas for annexation, totaling approximately two-hundred-and-forty-six acres of land. Those properties are Stone Creek Plaza, Ranchview Estates and adjacent areas, The Willows and adjacent areas, and Ranchview Estates Three. The package will bring in approximately nine-hundred-and-fifty-five new residents. This is based on two-thousand-and-ten census data. The city will see an increase of approximately one-hundred-and-fifty-five million dollars in new valuation. The package has a debt ratio of two-point-two-three percent, and as indicated earlier, is revenue positive over that ten-year period. I'm gonna skip over the financial projections. That information has been provided to you in your packet. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions on any of that if you have any questions. More specifically, though, public safety will not be compromised. These areas have low call volumes, and with the addition of the fifth precinct out west, we anticipate being able to provide full coverage from a police perspective. From a fire perspective, these areas are already being served by Omaha Fire Department through contract agreements. There are zero acres of parkland that are being included in the annexation package. There was approximately eight acres of land that was identified. From what we've been told, since, that property will remain private property and not subject to maintenance purposes as the city considers that. There's approximately fourteen lane miles being added to the city's road network. I can also report that all of those roads are, and have been, built to city's current standards, and so therefore will continue to be maintained by the city. As we indicated, all areas, if not already served, will immediately receive all essential city services, including fire, police, solid waste, street maintenance, and snow removal. We ask for your recommendation of approval this afternoon. Should you recommend approval this afternoon, this package will be introduced to City Council on June twenty-fifth with a final reading and vote on July sixteenth. That effective date will begin July thirty-first, and those residents will begin, start receiving those essential services thereafter. Again, if there's any questions I can answer, I'll be more than happy to at this time.
Thank you, Troy. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak?
Good afternoon. Derek Miller, City Planning Staff. I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Derek. Any other proponents? Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, close the public testimony. Eric, is there any additional comments?
No. As Troy mentioned, the city, in several different departments, go through a very detailed task of identifying potential SIDs or areas to annex. So, just want to reiterate the amount of time that's been spent by different departments and staff in general. Staff recommends approval.
Any comments or questions from the Board?
I just have maybe one question. If I could ask Troy to come back up real quick, just for the record. Troy, what do you anticipate the levy happens, the levy to these residents in these areas?
So, there are a number of different taxing jurisdictions. So, as these properties are annexed, there will be an introduction of the city's levy amongst other taxing jurisdictions, school districts, et cetera. Included in your packets, I can refer you to the last page of this agenda item packet. You can see a breakdown for each of the SIDs. The tax rate change, the title of the page is "Tax Rate Changes in Annexed Areas." In each of these annexed areas, the tax rate will go down, and I want to clarify that with, if you look at Ranchview Estates number four-six-seven up in the top right-hand corner, the total tax on a hundred thousand valuation, what we're basing that on is the actual total tax contribution. The total tax levy actually goes up a small amount, but because that SID is currently charging for garbage collection, you'll see the actual total tax bill or tax reduce because that will no longer be charged to those residents. The city will provide that service free of charge. Now, one of the things we always tell those residents is that, you know, should you want or desire to continue to have a private waste hauler, continue to pick up, you're certainly entitled to that, but the city will continue to drive down the street and pick up everybody's trash as we've anticipated, free of charge, so...
Thank you. I think it's important just for everyone to understand what happens to the levy, and clarification of that was very, very important, so I appreciate that very much.
Troy? You had touched on this in the pre-meeting, but in regards to the Stone Creek Plaza, there's a debt ratio and the tax levy are above those thresholds that you had mentioned before. Would you just explain why that's acceptable for this annexation?
Right. So, as I explained a little bit, you know, as we start evaluating and eliminating those SIDs, one of the thresholds is that debt ratio, right? That if their debt ratio is above a certain percentage, we have a pretty good idea that it's gonna cost us more money to provide those essential city services than the revenue, the valuation that's being made available to us. With the one exception is, is for those SIDs that are generating revenue beyond their ad valorem tax, such as sales tax from retail establishments, hotel tax, so on and so forth, restaurant tax. An SID could potentially have a debt ratio larger than that threshold because the monies that they are generating from those taxable items are sort of offsetting the debt ratio. And so, as we evaluate all those SIDs, what we're really looking for is an entire comprehensive package that is net positive to the city.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any further questions? Any comments? I have, excuse me, I have just one comment. I'm not gonna be voting for this package. I think it's within the master plan. It's, the city has done their due diligence and put together a good package. I just have a disagreement with the condition of the streets. I don't think we should be taking on any additional streets anymore, lane miles, and I have a disagreement with the policy of the administration and the council on the substandard streets. And I'd like to see those corrected before we take on any additional subdivisions, but that's just my personal feelings. It's not gonna change the vote, but I just wanted to say that. Any additional comments?
Nope, just recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacher?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No.
Motion approved.
Uh, moving on, agenda item number five, case C nineteen dash nineteen dash one oh eight. Applicant, city, city planning on behalf of Jasperstone, one ninety, Hundred Ninety-second and Dodge LLC. Request approval of the annexation of Avenue One, location southeast and southwest of Hundred Ninety-second Street and West Dodge Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Jessica Thomas here, representing, uh, the developer Jasperstone, one zero two five zero Regency Circle. Um, we're here today making the request for the annexation of the, what is referred to the Avenue One property. The intentions behind the annexation is really to allow for the developer to utilize the financial mechanism that is not otherwise allowed outside of city limits. So, if you have any questions in regards to the annexation, I'm here to answer those for you.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Again, the shared board, Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief Staff, Mayor's Office, advocating in support of the project. Um, I'll just add that this one's fairly unique in that, uh, in fact, we kinda tried to go back through the history and see if anybody had historically voluntarily annexed or voluntarily petitioned the city to annex their property. Couldn't find any clear and concise examples, so we're, we're kind of stepping out in faith here that this process works, but, uh, advocating on behalf of the project, where this project will ultimately introduce almost a billion dollars in new development. Um, and so, as indicated by the applicant, uh, this request is, uh, will coincide with a request for a financing mechanism that's not made available to those folks outside of the, uh, city's corporate limits, hence the request that's before you all here today. Uh, but otherwise, I'm also available to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments, questions from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to bring the developer's representative back up. You'll see your address again.
Jessica Thomas, one zero two five zero Regency Circle.
Is, well, you don't have to name names or anything, but is there a reason why you wanna annex as far as, is, is there a project or a, a big tenant or user that you anticipate coming sooner rather than later?
Well, the, the intention right now is to annex the entire development, and in order to utilize the mechanism, the financing mechanism, we need to lay that out now. Whether or not there are any users currently in place or plan for the future, what this does is allow us to plan how we want the development to process out. Um, because from a planning point standpoint, we needed to figure out, okay, are we gonna be within the city limits or outside of the city limits?
Okay, so what happens if, if nothing gets built in five years? It'll be okay?
So, we've been working closely with city staff as it relates to how this financing mechanism would work, and we are, you know, it's still in the process of how that would lay out, but in, the intentions are to allow it to phase, so that in the event it takes a little bit longer, or certain portions of the development develop faster than other portions, then we would still be able to utilize this financing mechanism.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions, comments from the board? Eric, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, so the Avenue One project, um, there's several items that will be proceeding to City Council here in the upcoming weeks. This would be one of the items that goes along with the plat and rezoning, mixed-use development agreement, uh, along with a few others. So, it's, um, it's proceeding along nicely, and it's, it's good to see the project coming to fruition after, after years of planning for this and the adjacent Fountain Ridge project. Um, I do wanna point out, there is a small portion of Avenue One that is not included in the annexation on the very western edge because it is already within the city limits. So, the boundaries for this annexation differs a little bit from the preliminary platted area of Avenue One. Other than that, a hundred-and-eighty-three acres, we've gone over the specifics of this plan. Um, the first eleven lots would be part of the final plat that's being recorded here in the upcoming weeks. Staff is recommending approval, subject to recording of the final plat of Avenue One.
Is there an avenue that runs through the property?
Several.
Call.
I move approval of, subject to recording of the final plat of Avenue One.
Second.
Lisa, we have a motion and a second. Will you please record the vote?
Karnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on, agenda item number six, case C three dash eighty-eight dash thirty-six. Applicant, city planning on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of an amendment to the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan. Location, area generally bound by I four eighty, Eighth Street, Farnham Street, Tenth Street, Leavenworth Street, and the Missouri River. May we hear from the city, please?
Derek Miller, City Planning Staff, uh, here with the amendment to the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan. Uh, this amendment will allow and facilitate the redevelopment of the Conagra area, um, and I'm here to answer any questions on this agenda item.
Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Any comments, questions? Eric, do you have anything to add?
I don't. We have, Law Department here has also been working with, um, the redevelopment plan construction and that, if there are any questions, but, um, just say that staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, you, will you please record the vote?
Sure. Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Karnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Uh, agenda item number seven, case C three dash nineteen dash eighty-nine. Applicant, Murphy Shambly, request approval of a local landmark designation. Location, eighteen oh two, eighteen oh four, and eighteen oh six, North Twenty-Fourth Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Joshua Biggs. I'm the Program and Research Manager at Restoration Exchange Omaha. Uh, I'm here with-
Need your address, please.
Uh, nine-eight-one-three Maury Circle Bellevue.
Thank you.
I'm here with, uh, Mr. Caleb Flohr. He's the longtime, uh, tenant of Mr. Murphy Shambly. Mr. Shambly was not able to make it today due to an unforeseen circumstance, uh, but we're both here to answer any questions that you may have about the local landmark designation.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Proponents, you can speak, sir. If you wanna speak, go ahead. Just name an address, please.
Uh, my name is Caleb Flohr. Uh, my address is forty-six eleven North Twenty-Ninth Street. I'm a long, uh, tenant of this, uh, building, uh, nineteen years in. I'm also, uh, Treasurer of Long School Neighborhood Association, Vice President of Twenty-Fourth Street Corridor Alliance, and we consider this building, uh, historical, and we wanna preserve it no matter what new developments take place in the next couple of years down there. Uh, it's a beautiful building. It has a basement, and, uh, it should, it should stand the test of time, and we hope it does.
Okay, sir.
Sir, Caleb?
Yes.
I, I agree with you that it's, it's, it's a nice building and everything else. My concern is that it was built in nineteen twenty-two, I understand, and something, whoever owns it, whether it's the current owner or future owners, there's a lot of restrictions that get placed on that. So, I'm all for economic development along that corridor and throughout Omaha, but the concern I'd have is if, if it limits a future tenant, you know, if they wanna do something different to that corner, you know, it's still your corner, it still has your name all over it, uh, figuratively and, and, um, actually, hopefully, but you're aware that, that there are restrictions that are placed on these types of properties, right?
Yes, I'm aware.
You're okay with that?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, as long as it stays like it is, I have no complaints.
You had, you have to do all the tuck pointing personally, you know that, right?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right.
Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional questions, comments, before we hear from Eric? Eric?
Just going to state that it meets the proposed standards. Uh, for designation to be designated as a local landmark, uh, we do have additional planning department staff here that are, um, more involved in the process if you have any questions, but staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Karnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number eight, case C three dash nineteen dash ninety. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, excuse me, request approval of an inter-local cooperation agreement between Douglas County and the City of Omaha regarding an adjustment to the extraterritorial jurisdiction and the associated master plan amendment. Location, northeast of two-hundred-twenty-eighth Plaza and West Q Road. Are you presenting? Okay, Eric?
All right, so this inter-local cooperation agreement between Douglas County and the City of Omaha allows, uh, the City of Omaha to, to move our jurisdiction line to incorporate, um, an entire site within our boundary of zoning jurisdiction. There's a, a plat later on in the agenda, Legend Trails. The small southwest portion of that site is within Douglas County's jurisdiction. Uh, this inter-local, um, cooperation agreement basically cedes their jurisdiction over to the City of Omaha so that we can review the entire project under one jurisdiction, which only makes sense. So, uh, Douglas County's acceptable. Uh, you have a copy of the proposed amendment, or the proposed agreement in your documents. I can answer any questions, but staff recommends approval.
Okay. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Afternoon, Jim.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the Omaha Planning Commission. My name's Jim Lang. Uh, this relates, as, uh, Eric said, to item number-
Address, please, Jim.
Oh, eighty-five twenty-six F Street in Omaha.
Thank you.
Uh, this relates to item number eleven, which is a Creche Development, Legend Trails. It brings the southwest corner, as Eric said, into the ETJ, the City of Omaha, so that we're fully within the Omaha's jurisdiction, so, uh, we're requesting approval as well. Thank you.
Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions? Any?
Recommend approval.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Karnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number nine, case C three dash nineteen dash thirty-five. Applicant, Ken Bunger, request approval of the Forty-Sixth and Dodge TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, southwest of Forty-Sixth and Dodge Street. Don?
Mr. Chairman, Planning Board, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. Uh, this project located, as I said, at, uh, Forty-Sixth and Dodge, between Dodge and Douglas. Uh, on it, the developer has assembled nine parcels. Uh, project involves the demolition of three single-family homes and some of the older commercial buildings along Dodge to make way for this project. Um, pretty large project, a, uh, two-hundred-seventy-eight unit apartment building. Let me bring it in here. This is a view from Dodge, the Dodge side. Um, five levels of, um, apartment units on top of three levels of structured parking. Be two-hundred-ninety-five parking stalls. Site is about one-point-four acres. Uh, the developer is Forty-Six Dodge Housing LLC, Gary Hassan Flu, manager. This is a fifty-two-point-seven million dollar project, investment in the area. They're asking for six-point-five million in TIF support. Project meets the required criteria of the TIF program. It's an appropriate use for the area, and it complies with the city's master plan. We ask for your approval.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
My name is Rick Faust, forty-six seventy-two Mason Street, Omaha. I'm the construction manager on the project, and I'm just here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rick. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak?
Hi, Alex O'Handlin, thirty-ten Lincoln Boulevard. Um, I am assuming that I'm probably not gonna change any minds here today, but besides promising at the April Planning Board meeting that I would be here today, um, I, I wanna keep it. Uh, I wanted to come today to publicly go on record to say that I oppose the board granting TIF for this development for three reasons. Um, one, as I presented to this board in April, this is not the best possible development for this location. It will not meet the needs of the neighborhood, and with two-hundred-and-ninety-five parking stalls for two-hundred-and-seventy-eight units, it will not encourage usage of the bus rapid transit system. Without commercial space, it will fail to provide any added value for existing neighbors or space for new residents to integrate into the existing population. Without including affordable units, it's a missed opportunity both to support the bus rapid transit system and to increase the housing stock of truly affordable housing in the city in general, and particularly in this rapidly less affordable neighborhood. Two, neighbors are being pushed out by these types of developments. Regardless of the future tax revenues that these developments might bring in, neighbors are being pushed out. In the City of Omaha Master Plan, it states that Omaha must be a community committed to promoting and maintaining a high quality of life for all its people. Allowing these developments with high rents and private amenities does not seem to support the city's goal. Subsidizing these developments seems to undermine this goal. My old neighbor Kat had to move a few months back due to rising rents. Three of the original members of this neighborhood association, Mary, Spencer, and Lindsay, have already been pushed out by rising rents. Introducing more units to keep rents low only helps if the units introduced are affordable. Three, you are decision-makers. Developers are just doing their job. We can't expect them to bend over backwards to spend more money. But you, the planning board, have power to make decisions that affect our city today and for years to come. Through your votes, you can let developers know that the cost of doing business in Omaha includes respecting and integrating into existing communities and creating durable, beautiful buildings that are accessible to the average renter. As I stated before at the last planning board meeting, I'm not opposed to dense infill development, and I wanna build something together. I think that everybody interested in this development is right, that it's a great place for a new development. It's on the future transit-oriented development zone, and it's along the bus rapid transit route. For these reasons, I'm not afraid that if this development, as currently conceived, does not get built, that another one won't come along soon. But let's work together to achieve the goal of our city and create something that promotes and maintains a high quality of life for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, before you, before you head off, if you don't mind. You, you mentioned it doesn't meet the needs of the neighborhood, and, and I think I know why, but could you clarify what the needs of the neigh, what you think the needs of the neighborhood are?
Yeah, um, so I think that the needs of the neighborhood are more affordable housing. Like I said, the rents are going up, um, and I think that these types of developments push rents up further because, like I stated, that introducing more units only helps if those units are also affordable. Um, so I think in that way, it doesn't meet the needs of the neighborhood. Also, I would love to see commercial space to help make this like, cause our, for our neighborhood association, our business corridor is Dodge Street, so I wanna see more commercial development there, not just to increase economic activity in the area and support small businesses, but also to, like I said, create spaces for neighbors to come together, and also, like, when new developments come in, I think it's really important in the city of the future that we create spaces for neighborhoods, to neighbors to come together and get to meet each other. Um, so that's what I mean by that.
Yeah, I thought that might be.
You, you gave your address. Where, do you live in this neighborhood?
I was also pushed out by rising rents.
So, you, you live in Omaha?
I do. Thirty-ten Lincoln Boulevard, uh, it's just north of Coming Street.
I got you.
So what, so you spoke of you are being pushed out by rising rents, and three other people that you mentioned were pushed out. What do you think that's a contributing factor of?
What do you think is a contributing factor?
Yeah, I mean, is the-
Or what are the contributing factors to that?
What's causing that? Is there, is there, are there, is there a push to increase rent rates in that general area regardless of what's happening, just because of the Med Center perhaps or other developments that are?
So I would say that I've seen the rising rents be directly related to these developments going in, whether it's this development or the, well, obviously, this development hasn't gone in. But the Duke, after the Duke started to be built, that was when the first neighbors started to get pushed out. But even before that, you know, with like the other, like in the midtown area, people had moved from, sorry, not midtown area, people, some people on our block had like moved from the Blackstone area to our area. They started to have to move from the Blackstone area as like those developments went up. And then they moved to our area. And then from what I saw, like directly related to the Duke going up is when our rents started to rise.
So basic economic theory is supply and demand, right? So if there's a demand for the, for the, for the area, it's probably going to push things up a little bit because it's more appealing, more people want to be in that area. That's the theory, right?
That's one theory.
And whether you believe in it or not.
But also, there's a theory that like governments are supposed to help to maintain.
Sure.
Right?
Sure. Yeah.
So there is supply and demand, but if supply and demand hurts people, and part of the city's master plan is to provide and maintain a quality of life for all people, isn't that a good place for the government to step in?
In its appropriate-
And to help regulate?
In its appropriate place, it certainly is, but you, you know, you, private developments that occur all over the city of Omaha.
I'm just asking you not to subsidize this development.
I understand. I understand with the, with the TIF. I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I do have a question for Mr. Faust as well. Okay, go ahead. Sure.
So, and I'm in commercial real estate and do a lot of retail, at least a lot of stuff in this neighborhood. Some, you know, again, it's, it's supply and demand, and it's, you know, a lot of multifamily developers don't put commercial or retail or office on the first floor or in their buildings because, number one, sometimes it's harder to finance. Number two, there may not be a demand for it. So, you know, I know it's convenient for the people in the building and whatever, but, you know, I've seen coffee shops and multi-tenant buildings, and they don't get used, and they, and then either it gets very subsidized or they just go away and they create another unit out of it or whatever. So I would say I, I understand your, your point on it, but at the same time, there is retail, and there'll be more retail in that area as well. Just, I don't know if that's the right place for it.
Yeah, and I guess I, you know, it's like when someone says there will be more retail. Well, this is an opportunity to include retail. So how do I know that there will be more retail in this opportunity to have more retail if there isn't more retail? You know, so that's kind of where I'm going with that. And also, you know, I also help to manage like the Gifford Park Neighborhood Market, where we have lots of small businesses. So I don't think that there, you know, so I'm like pretty involved with like startup businesses in Omaha, and I don't think that there's any shortage of folks that are looking to expand their businesses.
So if you had a restaurant in, in this location, which might be a huge need for a restaurant in that area, right, where would you park them?
Well, I mean, I think that along the bus rapid transit system, that that would allow for people to access the area without expanded parking. Also with that, I was going with like a lot of planning theory that you want, like that you can't necessarily just always build parking. It has to just get congested, and then people will choose alternative forms of transportation. And I think that like Omaha has shown that they want to expand and become like a bigger city, and not necessarily expand, but like build from within and become a bigger city. So I guess I was thinking that, well, there was two things. If you remember, in April, I asked for the Planning Department to work with the developer to require less parking for those commercial spaces. And then we'd also talked about having like parking, you know, not on Dodge Street, but around the corner, and folks had told me like why that wouldn't work for certain reasons. But I guess, and also, like, I'm not, I don't work at the Planning Department, and I'm not a developer, but I'm trying to answer your questions as best as possible.
That's good. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
But, yeah, and like, so as far as like where I would park them, like I would encourage them to come on their bikes. I would encourage them to take the BRT. And I think that that's something we need to do. Like, don't we need to get twenty-four-hundred riders a day to make the BRT a financial success? And maybe them coming to my awesome new restaurant would be like a really good opportunity to get people on that.
Yeah, I appreciate your advocacy.
Thank you, and I appreciate you asking me so many questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents that wish to speak?
Hello, my name's Asit Gasswamy. I'm at four-two-seven North Forty-first Street. Just want to dovetail on some of the comments that Alex made. As far as the master plan for the city or the plan for the Omaha Rapid Bus Transit, I've been to a couple of meetings for that, and this vision of this building doesn't really support what's going on with the bus rapid transit. One aspect is that we talked about how buildings along Dodge would be nice to have, if we want it, well, let me back up. This idea is to develop the Dodge corridor and have it be a dense urban area. Then making it comfortable for people who walk, people who ride the bike, and people who use the bus would be in line better with that sort of vision. And then creating all these parking spaces, parking spots, is not going to encourage bus use. And so, again, another vote for, if we, you know, if we supply a lot of parking, then people are going to come and drive here. But, and it's going to lead to further congestion and other issues with the dense urban core, which we're trying to, trying to get to. Whereas if we limit the parking options, then yeah, people will have to look for other options, and the city is trying to provide for those. And so that's just one on the, the design of this and the number of parking spots available to it. And then secondly, just to discuss generally about the affordable housing. It's not, so I did my residency at Creighton. I loved the neighborhood. The neighborhood there, it's a lot of engaged citizens, and they come from a diverse range of class and cultures. And they, you know, they have community gardens and all these different activities that are going on in that community. Not having affordable housing is not, it's not just, you know, not having space for people that can't afford it. It's also, I believe, going to lead to less, less of this community engagement that's happening, and then also less of the diversity of options for, well, I think less community engagement in terms of that wide variety of things. The farmer's market is great, and so we see a lot of these wide variety of people come. And so, again, I guess let me specify, the lack of affordable housing, I think, is not just so like creating space for people of low income, but also is leading to the character of the neighborhoods themselves if we don't have space for all peoples. And so I just wanted to have another say to kind of support these things.
I think also, you have to weigh the fact that you'll have a lot more residents in that neighborhood, which, you know, they could be of any class, for as I'm concerned, but having a number of people will allow you to have more retail and more services. And when, when small business comes in, they want people there. And this, this project should bring, I don't know what, four hundred people or something like that? That's a, that's a big number for that area, and they should, a lot of them should use the bus rapid transit and the other services and things like that. But from what it is now, you don't have that, you don't have that population.
Right, so I'm, I agree with increasing population density. But if you're going to only increase population density for those that can afford high rents, then it's only going to attract a certain type of people that are going to come back, come to, into this neighborhood. Whereas I think we should be having space and room for all peoples of a variety of economic means. And so, yeah, I agree with Alex that, you know, developers are going to develop and maximize profits where they can. And I think as far as the planning board, it's really beneficial for you all to point to, we've made this great development, and we've made this great development. But in the process, the communities themselves and the people that are living there themselves are getting highly frustrated and kind of scared and anxious about what they see around them. You know, the Creighton building, and then even smaller things like, there's one house within the Gifford Park Neighborhood that was demolished and put up, and three different condos were put up that were, I think, are on for sale for three hundred fifty thousand dollars each. So these sorts of things are changing the, the character of the neighborhood. And so I just wanted to come up here and express that.
Thank you. Any other opponents that wish to speak? I'll close the public hearing. Mike, did you?
Yeah, if I can agree, Mr. Faust, back there.
Yes, please.
Yes.
Need to name, name an address again?
Oh, Rick Faust, forty-six seventy-two Mason Street.
Rick, a couple of things. One, has all the property that's needed for this been acquired?
It's all controlled.
So you've got letters of intent or agreement to purchase?
There are contracts to purchase.
Okay.
Yeah.
There are contracts?
Yeah, and I think those might be in your pocket.
Yeah, I wonder seeing them, but.
Yeah, there, there are contracts with earnest money down and, and.
Okay, so for that, this materializes, you have to have those, all those properties. And so you, you're confident that those will all be acquired, that they're under contract?
They are. I'm, I'm the construction manager, so I'm not intimate with those details, but I've seen the documents.
All right. And maybe, Don, maybe if you have info, okay. And then maybe, and maybe you don't, if you're the construction manager on this, maybe you don't have the answers to these questions, but do you know if there was any market studies done, kind of to answer the questions that have been raised here about the rates and, and what is the demand for these types of units in this, in this area? Was there a market study done to know what?
I, I'm not familiar with that part. I can't answer that.
All right. Thank you.
Don, did you want to come back up?
Yeah, Don, do you have?
Yeah, a few things. We do not take projects forward to the TIF committee unless they have site control. So that's all locked up. They either have contracts or an accepted offer to buy, or they own the property. So that's kind of standard operating procedure for us. Market studies, yeah, there was one done for this project. There was. And they're kind of shooting for an upper-end rent, actually. And actually, it's kind of refreshing that much of my career, I've argued for housing, where it's been low-income housing. People say, I want those people next to me. So it's kind of nice to hear the reverse for a change, I guess. My own opinion is that with this project, the Duke and some of the others in the area, without those, the rents would probably be higher. It'd be, because the demand is there. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you, Don. Any additional questions, comments from the board? Eric, did you want to add anything?
Just to recap, you know, back in April, as Alex had mentioned, you saw the plat and the PUR. So they're working on some final details before those are ready to go down to City Council. But those are a component of the project. Otherwise, for the specific TIF request before you today, staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Agenda item number eleven, case C ten dash eighteen dash one-six-six, C twelve dash eighteen dash one-six-seven, applicant Crete Development, request revised preliminary and final plat approval of Legends Trail Lots One through eighty-six, Outlots A through L, a subdivision outside the city limits with waivers of section fifty-three eight-two street width, section fifty-three nine-three curb and gutter, section fifty-three nine-nine sidewalks, and section fifty-three eight-four D lot frontage, along with rezoning from AG to DR. Location northwest of two hundred twenty-second and Q Streets. Jim, you're on.
Thank you. Chairman Rosenbaum, members of the Omaha Planning Board. My name is Jim Lang. I'm an attorney at eighty-five twenty-six F Street. I represent the applicant developer Crete Development. We were here before you, I think, in the September Planning Board meeting. On the preliminary plat, this is a single-family residential development, larger lots, eighty-six lots. So it's about one point five acres average per lot. We are in agreement with, to a large extent, with the recommendation report. My understanding is that we are just approving the revised preliminary plat here and the rezoning from AG to DR, and then laying over the final plat so that we can comply with the conditions, if that's correct, Eric. Yes. So based upon that recommendation, we're asking for approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Don Heine is with me today, too, from TD Squared, the project engineer. Thank you.
Okay, any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric, was Jim correct on?
Yes, so the recommendation report before you today is, is part approval, but recommending layover of the final plat. There's a few items that still need to be addressed that were conditions of approval. Specifically, we are in need of a slopes analysis to ensure that the project does not have a negative impact on the surrounding, on the environmental features of the site or drainage ways, you know, any sensitive features there. Also, staff is in need of a final wetland analysis to ensure that all identified wetlands are either encapsulated within outlots or are being mitigated with a proper plan. And then some final details regarding the tree canopy analysis and mitigation plan, if necessary. You know, depending on the applicant's timeframe, it wouldn't necessarily need to take very long to get those items into us and hopefully can be placed on a future agenda very quickly. Just to recap a little bit, we are dealing with eighty-six acreage lots and twelve outlots for open space. There are a few subdivision waivers that are listed, and most of those were also approved the last time the preliminary plat came forward. And due to this being in the Elkhorn Exurban Zone in the Omaha Master Plan, those subdivision waivers, which include street width, a reduction in street width, not providing curb and gutters, and then not providing sidewalks in certain locations of the development are acceptable. There is also a lot frontage waiver request for one of the outlots, which are acceptable. So I can answer any of your questions you may have. It's going to take me a moment here to read through these, but bear with me. Approval of a waiver of section fifty-three eight-two G street width. Approval of a waiver of section fifty-three nine-three curb and gutter. Approval of a waiver of section fifty-three nine-nine sidewalks, not providing sidewalks throughout the development, with the exception that sidewalks must be provided along two hundred twenty-second and Q Street frontages. Approval of a waiver of section fifty-three eight-four lot frontage. Approval of the rezoning from AG to DR. Approval of the revised preliminary plat, subject to the twenty-two conditions listed in the recommendation report, and layover the final plat to allow the applicant time to address conditions of the revised preliminary plat approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
As Eric suggested, what he said.
You could probably, if law is okay, you could probably say as staff recommends in the recommendation report.
That's fine.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
See, Jim. Moving on, agenda item number thirteen, case C ten dash nineteen dash ninety-two, C twelve dash nineteen dash ninety-three, applicant Paul Smith, request preliminary plat approval of Millwork Commons, a subdivision inside the city limits with rezoning from CBD and HI to CBD, along with the repeal of the existing ACI-one overlay district and approval of the NCE overlay district. Location northeast of Fourteenth and Nicholas Street. May we hear from the applicant?
Good afternoon. I'm Kendra Ringenberg. I'm the attorney for the developer on this. Address is nine-five-zero-zero West Dodge Street, Suite one hundred. I also have with me Keith Weeces, who's a representative of the development team, and Luke Weatherly, who's representing on behalf of Olson Associates, the engineers on the project. We've been in front of you before with respect to Millwork District as to the redevelopment of the historic Ashton Building, but now we're coming back, doing more of a master planning process. We needed to get going on the Ashton kind of right away, so we got that one going, and now we're ready to start on kind of the overall plan. Millwork Commons is an urban mixed-use redevelopment plan for a portion of north downtown. So you just, just to get kind of your bearings on the, the location, it's in close proximity to a number of key pieces of Omaha, Slowdown, Film Streams, TD Ameritrade, et cetera. The current master planning anticipates approximately five hundred thousand square feet, retail, office, residential, both townhomes and apartments, a hotel likely, and then also a, a large entertainment space. It's a unique development unlike any other in this area, and we are really excited to get going on kind of the overall plan, trying to tie in the historic nature of the buildings, especially on Nicholas Street, and also incorporate the industrial components to the north. It's an exciting and challenging project. It's still in its infancy in a lot of ways, but we really need to get going on kind of the overall preliminary plat. We will be back in front of you for a final plat of just a component of that pretty quickly because of some specific projects going, and then the rest of it will probably kind of develop as we progress in the project. I did want to take just a moment to, to address a couple of the issues that have come up in the rec report and just kind of identify some, some of the things that still need to be addressed. We recognize that there, you know, again, this is a preliminary plat for a very large redevelopment, and so things will- and so things will ebb and flow, and there will be changes as we progress. And so, we just want to kind of explain a couple of the items. First of all, yeah, so if you look at, there is a portion of the property on the east side that we, that we do not own. And really is not part of the Millwork Commons project, but it was part of the preliminary plat for a variety of reasons tied to access. We needed to, we needed to include it. But I, we wanted to address that because in the rec report, it discusses us including that in the NCE overlay, and that was not our intention. That property owner may or may not want to be part of that. They may want to do their own. So, we just wanted to address that. We will, we will obviously take that up with city staff and have more discussions on it, but that is not our intent to include that piece, nor do we have the authority to, to bind them to that. The other issue is the intersection of 14th and Nicholas Street, which is right over here. As you can see, Nicholas Street used, right now, the right-of-way of Nicholas Street runs right through the west side of our property. We are, we are proposing that it get moved to the west to allow, to allow development of that area. Otherwise, it really cuts off a piece of the property and makes it not, not able to be developed. City staff has recommended not doing that at this point. Just, just so you know, we have been and will continue to be in discussions with them, trying to figure out how to make that work. We do have a local developer actually interested in doing a project right there, right now. So, we are heavily invested in trying to figure out a path to allow that development to happen. But, still working with city staff on it, and obviously wouldn't be back for final plat until we have that resolved. I don't have any other specific questions, but if you have any questions for me, or Keith, or Luke, please let us know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, RJ?
RJ Neary, 12500 I Street, Suite 160. I'm here on behalf of Future Forward, the adjacent property owner to the east. Kendra mentioned some of the property in the preliminary plat. And actually, there, we, we also own the property on the west, the 12 acres on the west. We are under contract to sell that to the Millwork District, and fully here to endorse this project, as you've heard over the times with a couple caveats. And I have, too. So, we were, the property east of 12th Street was not supposed to be in the preliminary plat. I guess we don't have a problem with it as a preliminary plat, but we have some things to work out with Millwork. And the, on the NCE overlay, all the information we were given prior to today was that, that we weren't in part of that. Our contract calls for an agreement, for us to be in agreement with the NCE. I think we're almost there. We have a couple little things. So, I guess I'm here as a proponent with a couple caveats to be worked out before the final plat, and hope we can keep moving this forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, RJ. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions from the board?
I guess I, I just.
One question for Kendra. On the 14th Street, would it extend all the way down to 14th? Or would it stop, and then you would go east a little bit and then have to go back?
You know, there's been a couple different iterations of it. Right now, it would go straight, and then, and then near over. But one of the recommendations is to, to kind of take it over this triangle piece here and, and loop it a little, a little easier. But we need to work on that. That triangle piece is not something we control.
Okay.
So, that would need to be worked out.
Do you know, who owns the triangle piece?
Union Pacific.
So, could you use your, your property then to, instead of using their property, use their property to create a little, little?
I know you got a building located right there.
We have a building going right there. So, yeah, and ideally, we don't have to move that building. So, that's what, we're working on it and working with all the vested parties in the area on kind of the, the routing of that area. So, with the city, of course.
Kendra, for you, for you.
Yeah.
And maybe this isn't a question for you, you done?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. You mentioned a large entertainment district as well in here. What, what do you envision in that? And, and again, you know, I look at all of what's around that area and, and, you know, some is supported very well, and some isn't very well-supported.
Sure.
So, how much entertainment do we need in this area?
And we, and I can let Keith speak to this, too, but it's, and entertainment might be, not be quite the right word. We, we are planning on a park, a very large park, that we're doing a significant amount of planning on, that would be open for public events, but also just a benefit for the community. We're also looking at some public space within the Ashton, which I think we discussed when we were in front of you for the Ashton, which would be open within the building, public space. But then there's also a couple of venues, looking at maybe kind of a restaurant slash, you know, little music venue, but nothing compared to the, I mean, not like an arena or anything like that, a smaller live, live music type.
Something like the Capitol District, do you envision something like that?
Potentially, and I don't know, do you want to maybe speak to? No, no, good. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's more of, you know, there's, there's several of those venues where they'll come in and have a restaurant with an open area that has, what's that?
It shows the open area.
Oh, yeah, here, let me show you. So, if you look at this, we've got, I don't know if you can zoom in on that, but right here is kind of our open public park area. And then, you know, ideally, maybe we tie that into a, an operation where they have music and a restaurant that's in and out. So, we're, we're looking at all those options right now, but I, there definitely will be significant public space, and they're looking at art and culture and trying to kind of tie that all in, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a question. Not necessarily for them, but personally for the city. The, I said, there's so many little elements in here that are just still in flux right now. Are we getting ahead of ourselves with, with this preliminary plat? Because if, for instance, if you, if your deal falls through, and, and this is included in that, I'm addressing RJ on that. So, if his deal falls through, what happens with the preliminary? Does it just, we extricate that part from it for when we go forward, or what?
I don't believe that it would be, I believe that the preliminary plat is okay to go forward in its current state. There's often time changes between preliminary plat and final plat, especially when you have a phased project, you're dealing with an NCE overlay. There's, there's multiple moving parts, and that, and that's not uncommon for a large development such as this. You know, specifically, as far as the ownership, when it comes in for the final plats, I mean, you're, you're to a point then where ownership, it, it needs to be, you know, because basically, you're, all the property owners need to sign the final plat when it proceeds to city council, and, you know, that has to be under control or in agreement. So, if, you know, if that falls apart, or it affords interests, you know, if those change, there's still time to, to make modifications. And if a revised preliminary plat is necessary when a final plat comes in, that's an option, too, when, when the changes are drastic enough to have another holistic view.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I was just going to say, when Dave and I were with the city of Elkhorn, our downtown was kind of dying. Remember that, Dave? It was, and some people still, you know, came forward, put their necks out on the line at times, and they revitalized the downtown area.
After we left?
After we left, yeah. No. No, it started when we were still there, but people like Kendra's group, RJ's group, and stuff that are moving forward, this is in need of development and improvement. And just want to say thanks for stepping forward and, and doing this. Any other questions or comments from the board? Eric?
Yeah. So, just to touch and expand a little bit, it's 42 total acres, 14 lots, six outlots, consolidating the zoning to CBD. We are repealing the existing ACI in this area, but in lieu of that, applying the NCE overlay. So, I, I do want to point out, perhaps our cover map probably should have been a little more refined as far as the boundaries of the preliminary plat versus the boundaries of the NCE plan. So, the actual exhibits in the NCE plan don't include some of those lots that RJ had mentioned. So, I apologize, our cover map didn't reflect that. But we do have different boundaries for the different requests. There are still some public improvements items to work out. The city, for several years now, has been looking at the major trucking route and, you know, the location of that. We do have public works staff here to answer any questions on that, if you have any. There is a potential parking structure that the applicant has been coordinating with the city of Omaha on, so we continue to ask for continued coordination on that item, as well as, as, as well as all others. And then specifically for the NCE plan, we want to be able to continue to work with the applicant just on the language, the exhibits, and, and what that includes. And some of the specifics of that are, you know, the permitted uses, signage, building materials, items like that. So, the NCE plan, we have about three or four of those in place, and, and they try to really incorporate the characteristic of a neighborhood and, you know, allow it to be flexible, but also bring it up to our highest standards. So, we're excited about the possibility that the NCE plan could provide. So, that being said, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from CBD and HI to CBD, repeal of the existing ACI overlay district, approval of the NCE overlay district, subject to submittal of an acceptable final plan prior to hearing by city council, which would not be until final plat. And then approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the 12 conditions listed in the recommendation report.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move for approval of the rezoning from CBD and HI to CBD, repeal of the existing ACI-1 overlay district, approval of the NCE overlay district, subject to submittal of an acceptable final NCE district plan prior to hearing by city council, and approval of the preliminary plat for Millwork Commons, a subdivision inside the city limits, subject to the 12 conditions in the department's recommendation report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete? Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved?
Agenda item number 15 was pulled off a consent. It is case C-10-19-95. Applicant Jim Rush, request rezoning from R1 to R4, location 5066 Harrison Street. May we hear from the applicant?
Assisting here is representative for Mr. Rush, 13448 South 217th, Gretton, Nebraska. Mr. Rush wants to build a garage, wants to put it on a flat area so he doesn't have to do a bunch of grading to his property. Not sure what else you need from me. The lady who took us off consent left, so.
Okay, are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, any comments, questions from the board? Eric?
This rezoning request is compliant with the master plan and surrounding zoning in the area. Staff is supportive, recommends approval.
A motion for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Miss, Carnes?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved?
Thanks for sticking around.
Agenda item number 22, case C-8-19-104, applicant Alfredo Garcia. It is a request approval of a special use permit to allow indoor entertainment in the HI district, location 2325 South 27th Avenue. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, my name is Mick McGuire, Straight Line Design, 3925 South 147th Street, Omaha. And Mr. Garcia is not going to be able to join us. His wife Patricia has with Danielle. She's in, in attendance, and as well as her daughter. Would you like to say your name first? She also has something she'd like to read before.
Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Maria Noemi Garcia, 9601 South 26th Avenue in Bellevue. I'm an employee, and also a terror of Alfredo and Patricia Garcia. And we are coming from a not rich family, but my dad has been working his entire life. And whatever we, he is trying to do right now, it's just for the family and to grow a little bit more in this country. We are coming from Mexico, and that's, I guess, our dream, to be in the United States, but not living from government. We want to do something on our own. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So, I don't know if you want to start with the city's proposal or recommendation, or if you want to do with ours first, what we're asking for?
Yeah, go ahead and present what you're asking for.
Well, what we're asking for is, we've got a property that they own. And it's, they own this whole section of these two buildings. And it's this, this building right here that they're wanting to turn into a event center, basically for having people come over for wedding receptions, birthday parties, that type of thing. So, we're asking for a special use permit. We understand that it's high industrial. Right across the street, it's also high industrial. And there is a residential area over here to the side of it. And the neighbors, Naomi and Patricia, did go to the neighborhood and showed them the plans that we were proposing. And I would like to just read for the record what they signed. We have 11 signatures from the neighbors of the neighborhood. And what they signed says, "A special use permit is being applied for on the property located at 2325 South 27th Avenue. The property is currently zoned as heavy industrial, where the proposed use indoor entertainment is not permitted without the approval of a special use permit. Remodel within the proposed property will not expand on the existing footprint of the structures. However, additional parking on solid surface will be provided. We are requesting that the occupants be limited to 100 people. And parking, and parking has been provided for that occupancy. So, we're looking to do only 100." And then the city took a look at it and said, "There could be 6723 people on this site," because they took the whole footprint and divided it by seven, which is what you would be doing if you're standing at a concert or something. So, we're not even coming close to looking at doing something like that. Buffer yards, landscaping sidewalks, will be provided. And so, it says, "By signing this document below, I acknowledge that the drawings for the proposed project have been presented and reviewed. Furthermore, I, or we, the proposed improvement, we believe that the proposed improvements are acceptable and also will maintain the integrity of our neighborhood." So, I'd like to propose that we hand this in to for a part of exhibit. So, this family really came to me after starting some processes here with the city that they kind of got the cart in front of the horse. We weren't really sure how to go about doing this. Really an honest family. It's kind of the opposite of the broken window syndrome. When you see a broken window and the neighborhood's going down. There's plenty of broken windows in this area. I don't know if you traveled, were able to tour the, the site or not, sometimes you do. But it's in an area that was really heavy industrial, backs up to the railroad tracks, some abandoned buildings there right now. There's some recycling going on, where it's aluminum, that type of thing, right next door. This family went in, purchased this building, and it was just being used as a storage space, just a space for trash and metal and big trucks and things that were just stored in there. Cleaned it all out, really wanted to make this neighborhood nice. They also own property in the neighborhood, too, as well. Their, her uncle, his brother, lives not too far away. So, it's the reverse thing, is they want to make it presentable to the neighborhood. They want the neighbors to be able to enjoy it. They want to find a place that's affordable for families to come, have weddings, have birthday parties, and that type of thing. We've done projects before, I know that I've come across where the, the site is large. And it's larger than the people want to develop, but they don't necessarily need that much area, so they're asking for only 100. So, in this case, we were able to calculate, I believe that we could have, I think it was 128 people that could be on there at one time. But again, we don't need that much parking. So, we've also have a revised plan we wanted to share with you, too. And it's after receiving the recommendations and some of the concerns from the city that we put together another drawing that I like to show. It's a revised drawing, showing the buffer yard. Is it upside down? You okay? It does show the buffer yard, obviously, that would be required. It's a 15-foot buffer yard. Right here, through this area here, 15 feet, 14 feet is what they recommended. There's 27 stalls, two handicap, handicap ramps, and that would accommodate 100 people. Also, there's one large entrance into this parking area. So, landscaping we're proposing would be in some of these interior spaces, as well as the outside. There's a chain link fence right now that would be removed, so this would all be landscaping up front. There's also a concern, too, about sidewalks. We had a meeting yesterday, and we were deciding that, we decided that we'd be able to be happy with providing sidewalks in here, across here. One of our questions we have today, though, this is also on their property, so it's one big lot, and across the street is also high HI. So, if we don't have to put a sidewalk all the way across here, that's... So if we don't have to put a sidewalk all the way across here, that would be preferred, just because right now it's just a big gravel piece of driveway and parking area. What do you use that on the building? It's the same as this one was before. It's full of stuff. It's just solid, they don't really use it. I think it's just for storing vehicles and it's not being operational and nobody's working there. It's more of a large storage area is what it is. Curb, there's also concern about the curb. We did look at the curb situation. What appears to us is that, let's see, there's been a lot of infill over the years with, with blacktop here. So the curb itself is kind of a rollover curb right now, curb, because it's been built up. So we have really small curb, curb on that street. If we actually had to, I suppose we could look at replacing that, but really, there's no, there's no other sidewalks on that side in this high industrial till you get to residential So with that, I.
Real quick. There's one big problem is that the city has not seen this plan.
Correct.
So for us to move ahead today with the vote, without the city having time to study the plan and, and put together a recommendation, that's, I doubt that's going to work for you today.
So maybe a carryover would be appropriate?
Well, I think the best solution for you might be a layover, but that depends on a motion made by the board.
Okay.
Without the city having a chance to see that plan.
Understandable, understandable. I think for, you know, we're happy to do whatever the city's asking us to do. What we're really looking for is the occupancy. Because when the city came back, we found out that they were saying we could have 623 people on the site. We did a little research as well. We wanted to find out, I was just curious more than anything, how many people that would, what size facility we're talking about for this site. So really, what we're really, really asking for is its possibility to go to the 100. Because when I looked at, similarly, the Durham Museum is 600 people, and they're saying that we're going to be 623. So the size of this venue is so much smaller than that, that we really, really think that the 100 would be adequate for this area to give them a place where it would be affordable for people to have these parties. So I understand completely what you're saying about this plan, that the city needs to review it. I would just ask that when they did, that they could maybe reconsider the amount of people that we plan on having here and take that into consideration as well.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other, are you done there?
I'm done.
Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Any comments, questions from the board?
Just to reiterate what you said, there are just so many fundamental things that, that were wrong on the original plan that we see, and that's all we've seen.
Right.
That it, it's really prevalent upon you to, to ask for a layover, to work out with the city staff. Now, they have, they have certain guidelines that they are bound to use as far as occupancy and how many, how you count people and all that kind of stuff.
Sure.
It's not just because somebody says, "Okay, we're just going to work at 100. We can't go that way." Okay.
No, I understand that. It's based off square footage.
And so what it means to is that you just need to spend more time with, with the staff to work out a plan. And there's, there's incompatible uses on site and it's still one property. And there's just a lot of complications.
Yeah, it's a unique space.
That I think need to be worked through before you come back to us.
Okay. I appreciate that.
And maybe if I could get clarification, is it Ms. Garcia? Is that your last name?
Maria.
Maria, thank you. So your assumed use for this is going to be a banquet facility of some sort, I assume for weddings and the like. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you get, do you have experience running that type of venue?
Not really.
Okay. Because that's important, I think, too, in being successful.
Yes.
In it. And will you have catering or will you have kitchen in, in this establishment to?
We are going to have catering.
Catering, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, there won't be any cooking on the site, it'll be all catering.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Eric, did you want to present?
Yeah. Yeah, so with, originally, staff was aware of, or brought their attention to the site due to a liquor license application. So we had city staff go out to inspect the property and, you know, as a response to that application. And the staff member had realized that work was being done on the building without proper permits and things like that. And it came to our attention that the proposed use was indoor entertainment, which needs a special use permit. With the special use permit process, the zoning code, the master plan, wants to try to bring a site into as much compliance as is feasibly possible. You know, so whereas some of these lots may not have sidewalks now, with that special use permit process, you know, we're always going to recommend sidewalks or putting in the landscaping that should be there. We did not receive a landscape plan with this submittal. We just had the site plan that Mick had up. You know, usually there's a pretty large buffer yard between HI or industrial districts and adjacent residential, such as there is to the west and southwest. But based on the depth of that property, it can be reduced. You know, perhaps they can provide the, the landscaping. You know, one of, one of the biggest concerns is dealing with occupancy and, and how we calculate it. We use building code and building occupancy when looking at these types of uses, when there's not fixed seating, when it, you know, banquet rooms can be, you know, facilitated with different, different styles of tables and chairs. That's really our best way of calculating that. Now, if we had a floor plan that, that shows what would be proposed and what the rooms would look like, yeah, perhaps the number of occupancy that we had previously indicated in the report, that could come down. But based on that number, it's difficult to just say it's a limit of 100 people if the space can show that it, it could hold more people. I mean, that, that, it's one thing if it was a use such as a daycare that required a state license, that you could physically limit the number of occupants. It's another thing when you have, you know, in a banquet facility, that's a real tricky enforcement item. And so, you know, they may have intentions of, of limiting it to 100 people, but what happens if, you know, it's, it's a bigger party and more invites get sent out, more people show up? I mean, there's not really a, a good mechanism of, of limiting the number of people that come into that facility. And then what happens to the parking if you only have a certain number of parking stalls? You know, it carries over into the adjacent neighborhood and, you know, so that's one of the biggest concerns. And, and like I said, maybe that number can come down. I'm, I'm skeptical we can find that right number. I mean, when you look at a site, it, it's pretty small when you have multiple buildings and you have warehousing use and, and you're proposing this commercial operation that can potentially bring in a lot of traffic. But, you know, I mean, we are recommending denial. We'd be willing, you know, if you, the board sees fit to lay it over to allow revised plans submitted to us. And we can, we can always sit down with the applicant and try to work through those issues and see if there's any common ground.
Eric, we do have a site plan. Your floor plan, I think, attached to that application. Were you able to see that?
Okay. I don't recall seeing it. Now, perhaps it's in the, in the file. You know, I didn't personally work on the case, so.
Okay, sure.
I don't think I have much else to, to add to the items of the recommendation, but I would stand by our recommendation for denial.
Okay. Any additional comment or questions? Do we have a motion?
I move for denial. Second.
Lisa, we have a motion and a second. Will you record the vote, please?
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Carnes?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
I'm voting no, only because I would have preferred a layover, so.
They can bring it back.
They can bring it back, but, yeah.
It is true.
Okay.
Okay, motion for denial is approved.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's the end of the agenda, isn't it?
Yep.
We got to take a vote on the minutes. I wanted to just make one comment before we do so, and that is, I meant to say something upstairs and I didn't get around to it, but as chairman of this board, you guys really make my job easy. If I sit back and listen, you guys, and Chris, I'm sorry.
I consider myself the guy.
You're a guy. But you guys always ask the correct questions and ask, you know, you probe into things. And I just want to say, it's, it's always a pleasure to serve with you guys and thanks for making my job easy. Do we have a motion on the minutes from last, we, last month's pre-meeting?
I move to approve the pre-meeting minutes from the May 1st, 2019 meeting, pre-meeting.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you, will you record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?[1702.23]